A virtual meeting will be is being recorded and roll call votes. President Gary Cheeseman.
Diane Boca.
Peter Clay.
And Steve. Are you on? Steve, Steve. Good look at the shelf there anyhow. That's good. All right. So, uh, welcome. And as usual, let's, uh, step forward to, uh, public input for items not on the agenda. So Michelle, do we, uh? I see Rick Woodland has hand up.
Pat Woodell.
Yeah, I see Pat. Okay. So, uh, let's, uh, have Rick Woodland speak.
Thank you, Chairman Cheeseman. Uh, Rick Woodland, twenty-six Maple Street in Wenham and, um, I'm just, uh, putting some input on the, uh, dispersment of ARPA funds. Uh, I'm making this as a private citizen and not as a member of the planning board, but just to make, um, the select board aware that there is the master plan process going on. And ARPA funds, uh, could be set aside to maybe, after the plan is developed to actually fund some of the ideas the citizens of Wenham, uh, come up with and believe are in the best interests of the town future. Thank you for giving me that opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Rick. And, uh, Patrick Waddell's hands up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so three to five has been an issue for a while now. As the select board knows, the town has voted on it twice overwhelmingly. Uh, we're going to the ballot. The state requested some documents or documentation from town. Town dragged its feet before sending that on. So Lauren from KP Law sent me a copy of the message that was sent on ten-three. There were some emails between state members of the State House, and they returned an email on ten-four, the next day, saying, we need you to vote on this amendment to, to get this forward. And they wanted it back on Thursday. They sent it on Tuesday. They wanted it back on Thursday. That has not happened. It is now two weeks later and you're having a meeting. You have this amendment in your possession and you are not voting on it. This should be on before you right now. Please stop dragging your feet, get this done, get it back to the state so that we can have five select board members potentially in July or August. The town wants this. Please stop dragging your feet. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Patrick. So the town is not dragging its feet. We're working on each of the things as they come out. So enough of that. Then we'll move.
Gary, excuse me. Gary, excuse me.
Patrick.
Oh, I thought you were. I thought you addressed me because, because.
No, I was addressing the issue, Patrick. Enough, enough, Patrick. I was addressing the issue. We're working on it. So, and we, uh, we copy and we get all your phone calls and emails as well. Thank you. All right. Uh, to announcements then, Steve.
All right, the first one, um, we get a bunch of questions on this. We actually just received the date, uh, yesterday from the vendor. So Bagley Collection for calendar year twenty-twenty-two will happen as follows, Saturday, November nineteenth and Saturday, December tenth. Um, you can see here, uh, down the bottom, we got, if you have any questions, uh, contact the DPW. And, uh, there's, I'll just run through the list of, uh, requirements leaves, uh, must be placed in brown paper. Must be placed in brown paper lawn and leaf bags or loose and barrels. So those are the, um, the paper bags you can pick up from Home, uh, Home Depot or Lowe's or Ace, uh, pretty readily available, made specifically for, um, uh, lawn waste, uh, bags or barrels must be on the curb by seven AM on those collection days. Uh, they will not be picking up, uh, leaves that are used in plastic bags. Uh, do not mix brush, uh, and sticks with the leaves, leaves, le- loose leaves on the curb without being contained in a paper bag or barrel will not be collected. All right, and Wenham's having, uh, Hamilton, Hamilton and Wenham jointly are having Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day in two thousand twenty-two. For two thousand twenty-two, it's on Saturday, October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, nine AM to noon at the Hamilton DPW. But it says at five seventy-seven Bay Road. Um, checks only, uh, payable to the town of Hamilton. Any questions on, uh, on fees, uh, you can, we have the list of items allowed and the fees associated with them on the website. More information, call the Hamilton DPW or feel free to reach out to the Wenham Select Board's Office, uh, and we can, you know, help, help facilitate getting the information they need. And, uh, the Hamilton and Wenham Boards of Health having a flu vaccination clinic, uh, all Thursdays in October. So it's October thirteenth, twentieth and twenty-seventh. Uh, yeah, the location on the, the thirteenth is at the Hamilton COA on the twentieth. Uh, Miles River Middle School Cafeteria. And on the twenty-seventh is the Duker School. Uh, any questions, please, uh, direct them to, um, Select Board's Office and we can again help, help get you the information that you need. And this, um, this is an announcement for the annual CPC hearing. I see Harriet Davis is on with us this evening, so I will let her speak to us.
Okay, uh, I would like to call everyone's attention. First of all, the meeting is at six-thirty, not six o'clock as, uh, on the slide. And I want to point out that this is an annual hearing that we're required to put on by Mass General Law. And it's to let the committee know all the thoughts, all the concerns of the community, uh, for projects that might be ready now, but might be uh, on the docket for a year or two in advance. This is a meeting, uh, this is a hearing at which we want to hear uh, the needs of the community, but it's not a time for multiple speakers or presentations. Presentations are to be filed in the Town Administrator's Office on January eleventh by four PM. And I reiterate, uh, this is not, uh, a hearing for multiple people to speak on one topic. I would hope that those who are eager to present a particular, um, uh, project would pick a spokesman and we just bring it to the CPC, uh, attention. Look forward to seeing all of you on November sixteenth. That's a Wednesday at six-thirty via Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you, Harriet. Back Steve.
Yep. Yeah, thank you. Well, um, we will update the slide, uh, in the packet to be reflected at six-thirty for the link online for folks looking it up. And I believe that is the last. Oh, no, there's the, there's the big one. The water ban has been officially, uh, lifted, so folks can start watering their grass again. Uh, so effective October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, the outdoor watering ban to Wenham has been lifted. Uh, so again, any questions, uh, surrounding that, please reach out to, um, uh, the Water Department, Eric Mansfield, or myself or Michelle in the Select Board Office.
You want to go with your, uh, administrators update then, Steve?
Sure, yep. Uh, first one up is just wanted to remind folks that, uh, we have early vote, early votings coming up. Um, and, uh, that the, on the Saturdays of early voting, that will be open until five o'clock. And, um, also, we just wanted to highlight that the, uh, Police and Clerk's Office have coordinated to, uh, have, uh, officers stopping by periodically for the safety of, um, the public and our staff. And the other one is, uh, the ARPA survey. So that is ready to go. We will be posting it tomorrow morning. We're just working with our website vendor to, uh, generate. Uh, not really technically sure what it is, but some sort of an embedment in, in the website, uh, and that will be done tomorrow morning, but it's, it's ready to go. We'll also be pushing it out through social media and I'll be sending an email blast to all, uh, committee members, uh, committee board members, um, and board members so that they may participate. And that, that's all I have for you this evening.
Any questions from, um, Diana, Peter?
None for me.
None for me.
Right. So, uh, Chair's Report, the first thing, a reminder that Halloween occurs on Monday, the thirty-first in Wenham from five to eight PM. Lights on if, uh, you're open for trick-or-treaters, lights off otherwise. And, uh, be especially careful driving during that period, five to eight, Monday, the thirty-first. Uh, all to talk about wa- water as well. We had the drought this summer. And, uh, Senator Tara has a working group for all the, uh, communities on the Ipswich River. So if you want a little bit of, uh, history mixed in with their current events, Erin, uh, Bonnie Casey from the Ipswich River Watershed Association will be speaking this Wednesday at the Wenham Museum at noon as the museum is starting up its brown bag lunch. So she'll be, uh, speaking on Wenham's water, past, present and future. That's all I have. Diane?
Oh, I had, um, just a thought that I wanted to share was, um, bringing in some sort of training. I noticed that, uh, Maya, our health insurance has, um, all-in-one health. I think Steve can tell me if we use that for our EA, for their EAP, but they offer things such as, um, proper meeting protocol, how to run a smooth meeting, et cetera, et cetera. And, and I thought it, I'd like to just bring it to your attention that maybe we want to do some sort of training. And the reason I'm thinking about it is with, oh, we have lots of new staff, um, new appointments. Um, it seems like a changing of the tides. Hopefully we'll go back to more on Zoom or hybrid. People haven't really been meeting together. It might be a good time to just review all the basic things, including a little bit of open meeting law. So I wanted to run it by the, the board to see if it was a good idea to do. You what?
Steve has some information on that for you.
Yeah. It would be, I mean, we'll do KP Law. We're looking to coordinate at some point in November. Hopefully, open meeting law, that, um, training that will be available to all staff, boards and committee members. And, uh, we met with our Maya rep on Friday. No, yeah. Yeah, Friday of last week. And, um, you know, so we are exploring those programs and the training that they offer. Uh, one, they also offer, uh, pretty robust wellness, um, set of activities and training and things of that nature. So we've, you know, we're looking at potentially maybe partnering with Hamilton, uh, you know, once we gauge, you know, doing things like yoga and things like that to see what, what the type of interest is. If we can get enough, you know, if we can get more than, you know, one or two people interested here, Wenham would just, you know, they'd go through, uh, we'd just do it here and Wenham or, you know, if we can only get one person interested, we maybe will open it up and try to do it, uh, jointly. But, you know, we are exploring those options.
Awesome. It's just something I was thinking about. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Diane. Peter?
Uh, I've got nothing to say. All right.
Then, uh, onward then. Consent agenda, Peter? You're muted, Peter.
Uh, Peter Clay moves to approve the Wenham Select Board Open Session Meeting Minutes of September twentieth, twenty-twenty-two and October third, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
All in favor, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes, please.
Very yes. Thank you.
So this is, um, we sent out a draft this afternoon of, uh, an annual town meeting, um, essentially calendar of all the uh, dates and meetings that will need to take place leading up to the town meeting. Uh, it's April first, twenty-twenty-three, correction on the slide. And so, you know, we, we, so we're sharing this screen here, but the, uh, so we, we sent it in an Excel form so that the, uh, Select Board can kind of scroll through it and didn't know if they saw any, uh, things that jumped out at you. It was, it's a pretty long calendar, so it didn't really lend itself to fit on the screen uh, in any, you know, in, in a way that was legible for everybody looking on.
I actually found something.
Okay.
If I might. You have written down after a town meeting, uh, April fifth as a select board meeting, um, if two things, it, it's, I think it's April fifth. It's, we set up for the election in the Select Board's Room. So I wouldn't recommend a meeting the night before an election, but it's also the first day of Passover.
Okay. All right, we'll, uh, end on that.
Yeah. So I was at, when I looked at it, I thought the following Tuesday is the not usually Tuesday that we meet, so maybe we want to push it to the fif- for the eighteenth.
Okay. All right.
Oh, but that's a holiday. Yeah.
I will, uh, I'll work through it. I can give you a call.
A little bit of time on that. My other question is, I had written down twelve fifteen that we had a meeting, but it's not in there. Would it have been moved?
It's possible that, um,
So if it's not on this calendar, then we don't have it. Right. Okay.
So on this calendar, or the, uh, we should ask too, is the Select Board, uh, amenable to, um, what is it? Tuesday, January third for the regular Select Board meeting. So do we want to meet three and seventeen or ten and twenty-four January? Because the Monday, the second's gonna be, you know, coming off the New Year's holiday. So we can leave that as an open question to the two of you.
The calendar, we have reflected January ten, but again, that can move.
So is everybody happy with ten? Ten twenty-four?
So if we do ten and twenty-four and then we meet. Oh yeah, that works. Yeah, I think that's better than the, than the third really.
I'm happy with that.
Okay, well, uh, stick with that then, Steve.
And then I also just want to highlight to the board that with the asterisks, those dates, uh, have not been, um, coordinated or confirmed, uh, by the CPC and the Planning Board. So those are still in process, but they are
Okay.
Uh, generally the timeframe that happens every year. It seems to happen in the same week just about every year. So, um, we're keeping that week open and, uh, and we'll, we'll update it and, you know, up, and update everybody as if anything changes based on this.
So a very busy schedule. Uh, FinCom's going to work here shortly and, uh, as well as CPC. And we'll propose on the, uh, first of November, Steve, are we going to have the, um, initial, um, figures starting on the first or the eighteenth of November for the, uh, budget cycle?
On the eighteenth of November?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, likely. Right. You can scroll up a little, Michelle. Um, I just want to make sure. What's the date that?
We meet on the eighteenth, so I think.
Yeah, so on the fifteenth, I believe. Is it the?
November fifteenth.
Yeah, so November, Tuesday, November fifteenth, um, we'll have the joint, there's a joint Select Board and FinCom meeting. Uh, and myself and, uh, Jamie Cologne will be presenting a financial overview with that will be the most up-to-date, um, budget estimates.
Uh, Steve?
Yep.
Question on Planning Board Friday, November eighteenth. Shouldn't that be Thursday, November seventeenth?
Yeah, right. So all the ones with the asterisks, um, have not been confirmed yet. They're just, it's just really just the same data was last year with the two thousand twenty-one updated to twenty-two. And those, uh, those will be moved, right? So likely that would, that should be to the seventeenth, but Thursday. And we'll be, we'll be called coordinate with, uh, Margaret and the Planning Board and also the, uh, Harriet and CPC.
Another question on the fifteenth, November fifteenth. Also, I see, oh, the six o'clock is it, is a joint with the Board of Assessors. Is that when they do their classification?
Yes.
Hearing? Okay. And then at seven o'clock, it's a joint with the FinCom to do the rest of this, the budget stuff.
Yep.
A lot of stuff.
Yeah, a lot going on.
Yep. And important one is remember, the big one is on Saturday, December tenth. For the, um,
Budget Day.
Yep. Any other, uh, comments, questions on, uh, that list? Standby for changes, right?
Right.
All right. Gary, would you like to introduce, uh?
Gonna be your best buddy, so why don't you introduce?
Yeah, so exciting, uh, you know, exciting news. We finally hired the Assistant Town Administrator, uh, which formerly known as the, um, I believe was Special Product Projects Coordinator. And, uh, you know, so Joseph Pesamato, uh, comes to us with, uh, you know, uh, a great background, but really excited to have him. And I won't go into too much detail. Let him introduce himself and, uh, some of his background.
Over to you, Joe, then. Thank you.
Great. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman and the board. I really just have a minute just to introduce myself. Um, so just a little background about myself. I'm originally from West Springfield, Massachusetts, uh, where the big E is, if you've ever been there, um, my family owns a bakery out west that's been there for like a hundred years, Balboni's Bakery, uh, local business. So I've had ties to the local community for a long time, had a passion for local communities. Um, originally, uh, my career field was, uh, I worked in special ed. I taught autistic children for a number of years. Uh, I desired to go into the public sector and moved out here a few years ago to Eastern Mass. Originally worked for, uh, the United States Bankruptcy Court for the Districts of Boston. And being a federal employee had, uh, definitely its pros, but I really desired to be in local government. So that's, uh, where I found Wayland, Massachusetts. I was there for a little over three years. First as a Assistant Town Clerk and then, uh, was promoted to Management Analyst. And then most recently served as the interim Town Clerk to help the town get through the state primary, which went very well, I'm happy to say. And just, it's been a great first week here. Looking forward to, you know, helping out the boards and committees, working on the master plan. And all the staff members here have been really great. Um, Gary's been great and it's been, and Steve also has been very welcoming. So, yeah, I'm just looking forward to rolling up my sleeves and helping, uh, Wenham as much as I can and happy to be here and get to work. So, thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Go over to Steve.
What's that?
Anything else, Steve?
No, I just said, you know, thanks for the introduction and, uh, welcome aboard. We're very excited to, to have, uh, have him here.
Diane?
We already spoke a little bit, but welcome. It's good to have you here.
Thank you, Peter.
Yeah, I sent him an email. Look forward to working with you, Joe.
All right.
Thank you, Pierre.
Thank you for being on tonight, Joe.
No problem.
All right, Steve, you want to introduce this? We've seen in the packet, but it's the, uh, just executing the warrant for the state election.
Yeah, so the Select Board needs to, uh, move to approve the November eighth, uh, state election warrant. So in the packet, it's, uh, you know, you could see it outlined and we've, uh, also added to include the, uh, proposition two and a half, uh, operational, uh, excuse me, override to, to the bottom. And then so now this, this is how the warrant is presented, uh, when you come to vote.
So, so that's the dead exclusion, right? The, uh?
Yeah, yes, that exclusion, right.
Right. So any questions, Peter or Diane, on the, uh, the state election warrant?
So.
For me.
I have a question on the, on question five, the dead exclusion. So at the special town meeting, we voted to approve those funds without contingent upon this, this vote. Right? So some people will think the vote does not matter. It still sort of matters, correct?
Yes.
Because if it, if it does pass, can I say this?
Yes.
If it does pass, then we are able to utilize potentially an override to pay for that fee. If it doesn't pass, we definitely cannot.
So if it passes and it's a dead exclusion we're talking about.
Yes.
So it was separated at town meeting from the floor. So the, uh, the borrowing by the school is not contingent on the vote. But the vote will still give the town the flexibility to use a dead exclusion to cover the cost there. So, um,
So, so we've already guaranteed, then we're going to cover that cost. This just might give us another option on how to do that.
That's right.
If it passes. Okay. Just wondering.
Considering inflation and costs and stuff, so, you know, we may need that flexibility come next to April as we go through the budget. Peter?
No comments. Do you want me to make, do you make the move? Draft the motion?
Yep.
Uh, Peter Clay moves to approve the November eighth, twenty-twenty-two state election warrant.
Second that.
Any further discussion? Otherwise, uh, the vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. Oh, yeah, yeah. Appointments tonight. Is, uh, Leonard on? I'm not sure.
He's not.
All right.
So, Peter Clay moves to appoint Leonard, Lenny Dolan, third, to the Hamilton Wenham Joint Recreation Committee for a term beginning October eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
And it's a reappointment, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I second that.
Any further comments or questions? Otherwise, roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Dolan.
Thank you, Len.
And, uh, we have one more.
And she's with us.
Yes. So Kirsten, uh, if you could introduce yourself and tell us about your experience with, uh, historic preservation, because I know it's extensive.
Uh, sure. Kirsten Alexander, two thirty-one Larch Row. Um, I have worked for Historic New England. I'm on the Planning, uh, Master Planning Advisory Committee, um, and I wasn't expecting to speak so, uh, what else, but a lot of experience with historic homes, preservation and, um, uh, grant writing as well.
Sounds good. And I understand your own renovation of homes too, right?
Indeed, yes. Maintain all the historic components.
Right. Are we ready for the, uh, motion then, Peter? You're muted.
These dogs that bark. Uh, Peter Clay moves to appoint Kirsten and Alexander to the Historic District Commission for a term beginning October eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. Thank you.
Second.
Any further? Otherwise, the roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. So welcome to the Historic District Commission, Kirsten.
Thank you.
And, uh, we'll have to remember for both appointments to, uh, get sworn in. All right, so, uh, upcoming meeting dates and events. So the in-person early voting starts this Saturday. Some of the largest cities have Sunday voting, but we do not. So it's Saturday or the weekday that you can come in to vote over the next couple of weeks with the formal election day on the eighth. Next Select Board meeting on the, uh, first of November. Anything else to add to the schedule, Diane or Peter?
That was super fast. That was great. I don't have anything else.
I promise the next two will be, uh, extensive then, because we've got to get into the budget items.
Thanks for the heads up.
All right. Peter? Muted.
Got it. With nothing left to further discuss, I move that we adjourn the October eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two Select Board Meeting at seven oh one, a record.
Yeah, no kidding. I second that.
Anything else? Otherwise, roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane? Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. Thank you, everybody, and, um, have a happy Halloween, I guess, is next event. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening.
Good evening.